Going in for Paul tonight, he has an emergency. So I guess I'm taking the helm tonight. So I'd like to start the meeting by asking somebody to make the motion to open.
Make the motion to open the meeting at six.
And now, second it.
One more favor? Jen's got that. So this is kind of a special meeting that we decided on. You know, the first thing on the agenda is marijuana. Basically going to the moratorium update. Board of Selectmen have decided to join us this evening and just want to kind of touch base with the board on what you've heard since the lawyer's email and everything else.
Well, you know, the lawyer has specifically said to us that we can't just enact the moratorium because we don't have a comprehensive plan or charter. So we are at the will of either having a special town meeting or making an ordinance and putting it on the May ballot, really, if that's what we choose to do.
Is this a proposed, is this a requirement that a municipality have a comprehensive plan in order to adopt the moratorium?
Yeah, yeah, so we don't need, yeah, you're correct. So we don't need a comprehensive plan in order to enact a moratorium, but we do need the town to vote on it, so the select board can't enact it.
So I was under the wrong understanding. I guess what the Board of Selectmen can do is expand upon it. So learning as I go here, so. So I guess I want to address the board and just kind of see where their minds at with moving forward on the moratorium. Is this something that we call a special election for to buy time so that we can have proper ordinances discussed with the town? As well as writing it in, passing it to the lawyers and go through all the motions for actual ordinances in regards to retail establishments?
Well, we really haven't sat into detail and had a conversation about our next step. I mean, I know how I personally feel and we can just talk about it now, but from last time. You know, I'd really like to see us try to do an ordinance before and put it on the ballot in May. If we can, I mean, I know I'm pushing, but something that we can change in the future just to start it. But I mean, I'm not sure how, because you know, we're kind of at the end here and trying to figure out what we really want on that ordinance to make it feasible for everyone, I guess. That's my personal thing. I'd like to see us build an ordinance for May. If not, then build at least a moratorium, you know, put the moratorium out there for May and then build the ordinance for November if that was the case.
Go ahead.
I think the planning board's been doing a great deal of work compiling information for the ordinance part. I think that they're real close on it, so would it be safe to say that we should continue working on it, get it, and then give it to the Board of Selectmen to be approved to put a moratorium in place for May? Are you still considering, is the board still considering the special meeting, the emergency meeting before the May?
Well, I guess it's a matter of opinion on how you see things. From my mind, you know, we could work very quickly and very thoroughly to try to get an ordinance in place. You know, I started the process of writing some of these, me and Paul have talked back and forth via email about writing specifically separate ordinances for each type of establishment. And I also drafted up a couple possible retail establishment prohibition ordinances, if that's the way that I wanted to go. This realistically is something that we, I just want to make sure that we have enough time to get to May for this to happen, because again, I know as soon as the new legislation is, or the new legislators are, they just actually got sworn in last week, I believe. So, once they start up their process again, once Governor Lepage signs the decree, again, it's, yes, it says up to nine months according to Proposition 417, but that doesn't necessarily mean nine months. And that's, that's why I was so concerned with at least pushing for the moratorium, because that would give us time to discuss with the town, discuss with each other different things about retail establishment ordinances, like how many of each type of establishment? What, should we do any type of specific licensing as a town to make revenue law?
Where should they be located?
Where should they be located?
How far should they be away from certain things like churches and schools and things like that?
Daycare.
Daycare, yes, absolutely.
That would be the build of the ordinance.
Right, and I mean, Jen, you might be able to help me out with this one. I know I sent umpteen different documents to you in regards to what I started with as a pre-draft, but maybe you could pass that along to the select board so that they can take a look at what the grant. It's basically just a shell, starting, a starting point. You know, I started to look at different, sort of looking, like you said, from schools and daycares and all that. There's other cities and towns that have already started enacting upon that and putting some general guidelines. I added something in there about, you know, distance from abutting properties, distance from road sides. Another question that has to come up in all this is with cultivation facilities. Should we allow outdoor growth facilities or should they all remain internal buildings? Should they not be outdoors? Again, these are the things that are going to come up for questions. And my major concern with just waiting till May for these ordinances is if we don't communicate with the town, we don't tell them what's going on, there's a chance that they're just going to reject everything and then we're going to end up with a bigger mess in our hands.
And I'm of mind that it's because it's so heavy and because it's so big, I feel like we do need enough time. I think if we just haphazardly slap something together to get put for the ballot in May, it's not going to be cohesive enough to suit all of our needs here in Lebanon.
So are you suggesting doing the moratorium in May? Or are you suggesting like having a special town meeting?
I think at this time, it would be best for the town's best interest to push for a special election. You know, with all, with all due respect with everything that's going on here, if this doesn't, if these ordinances don't pass, we're going to be right back at this and things are just going to grow out of hand. There's already people that are building developments in town, prepping for.
And realistically speaking, in order to have ordinances in place or in order to get something on the ballot for May, we need to have our ordinances done by February. And that's, you know, that's not very far away. So if we were to have a moratorium, then we would have a lot more time to work on it in order to get cohesive, you know, ordinance together for this.
So if, Jen did a great job compiling a lot of information for the board here too.
Jen's amazing, she's awesome.
Yes, she is. If I may recite this, question two is yes. It is correct that the town meeting would need to adopt a moratorium. The law allows the selectmen to extend the existing moratorium for an additional 180 days. So we could have the moratorium in place. If the ordinance wasn't, wasn't ready, the selectmen have that choice to extend it another 180 days. The town meeting needs to adopt an initial moratorium, not mortuary-um. Often, planning boards are asked by the selectmen to take a lead on the drafting and/or reviewing land use ordinances, which they're asking us to do. But the final say, as to whether a land use ordinance will be in place on a town meeting warrant and the form of, and the form of an ordinance are up to the selectmen absent a citizen's petition. So they're pushing for to get the moratorium in place. And then, of course, putting the blessing with the selectmen and to work on the ordinance, which would go in front of the selectmen anyway for a vote. So I think what they're asking for is that special meeting to put the moratorium in place.
I think it would have to be, if we did choose to go that route, we need to do it as a written ballot. And that, again, all has timeframes too.
For the ordinance or the moratorium?
For the moratorium, either way. I think it needs to be a written ballot. I don't think we should have a special town meeting where you raise your hands, because you do not know who's going to come out to that special town meeting on that day and, you know, and raise their hands. You don't know. If you have a ballot, people, they can vote it by absentee, they can vote it. That's my personal opinion. I mean, I think it needs to be a written, even the moratorium, I think it needs to be a written ballot. But we could do it, I mean, the other way too. I mean, there's three of us. I mean, you guys have all opinions too, what do you think, Royce?
I agree with you on that one, Christine.
I mean, that would give the public that can't get out.
Before these taxpayers, on this, on a moratorium or anything else to do with marijuana that is not in writing and clear.
So if any subject matter would go in front of people, it would draw that certain crowd anyway.
Yes, but other people that can't get out have the option. If you have a secret, you know, if you have a written ballot, they can do an absentee ballot. They have a right to, if they can't get out and sit in there and listen to us talk about this, they would have that option to vote either way that they want to.
People that were afraid to get out and vote.
And bring back the state, I'm learning, you know, I still live in different states. So you would, for an absentee ballot, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to have it at a, in May, the voting day? You have a special meeting and have absentee ballots?
You can, you can, but you're still going to have your, you're still going to have your timeframe. I mean, you're still going to order your ballots 45 days before your election. You still have to have them ready 30 days prior to the election, because you have to, it's quite a process.
It's the same rules as your, as your election, as far as what it takes to set it up.
It's all timeframes. You have to back up.
So you can't make the decision at a town meeting?
If you have a special.
Special town meeting, you can make a decision right then and there.
That's raise a hand vote. But if you had a secret ballot, no, I think you should go, yes. Well, you don't have to go May, but you would have to just back up the dates that you'd need to. Like, we would have to pick the date and then you'd back up so many days and make sure you have enough time to have it ready and everything printed and so on, so on, so.
So this being, December, we're getting.
Let me just jump in. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that during our special budget meeting, if you will, for the town, when those three budgets fail, I know that one of the budgets was actually done by vote of ballot.
Yes.
Was it not?
Yes.
Is that an option that's on the table? And all these questions that we're proposing?
It could be an option on the table, absolutely, but my fear is a lot of people would not come out that day. That wouldn't want to be.
Associated with.
Yes, yes. I would want to give all the public the right to vote and that's why I'd want to do it the other way, with the physical ballot. The other way, I mean, you're there and you can vote to vote by written ballot. We always bring them at a special town meeting, so if you want to vote by written ballot, you make, you know, you make a motion that we vote it by written ballot and so on, so on. They can do that there at that meeting. But again, you're going to miss all those other people, because they won't have the option to vote that can't get out, that can't, you know, or have something else to do that day with, you know, bad weather. If you call that meeting, special town meeting, you know, with any election, the date you call is the date it happens. If you're having a storm, it's happening, it doesn't matter. So how many people aren't going to be able to get there? That's my fear. If you do it the other way, then you have absentee ballots and they have them 30 days prior to the election and everybody has the option to vote. They can either come out. You have hearings, they're all scheduled prior to, and then, you know, they have that option. But again, it's all timeframes and we're pushing, no matter, either way we do it, we're going to be pushing. Because then she's going to run from that election, either if we do it raise your hand or we do a paper. You know, you're talking about this election and she's going to get ready for the May election anyways, which is big too. So you're going to be pushing, you know, the staff here too to get all this stuff done. Not saying, I mean, I'm not saying that I don't want to, we need to do something, but it's just what is right in timeframes. Because now we're in December, we're going to be rolling right into January here, so. She has to have the information no later than if we did a written ballot, she would have to have 45 days before we, Election Day, the information, so she can get it to the printers. We could actually, you know, if you're doing it and it's one question, we can print them probably here, send them to the printers and hand count them at the end of the election. You can do it that way. It might get a little bit easier than send them out to the printers and getting them back. Well, not for, at the end of the night, but it's, yeah, when you got to count them all.
Get them all together before the middle of March.
Yes, if you do it by written ballot with absentee ballots available, yes.
That's your final. Pass the selectmen and all that.
Yeah. Well.
If it was a special.
Yes, and we really need to, as a select board, sit down with the town clerk and see what, you know, because keep in mind, don't forget, I mean, then you roll it into taxes due in April, so she would have an election, taxes, and another election. You're really, we're really asking a lot to put, you know, the front office with all this not saying either way. I mean, unless we, I mean, but I really think it needs to be on paper. So I mean, I mean, if we could push it to May, I think it would be easier. If we could even put the moratorium on May with our regular agenda and stuff and just get it out to the public really well with everything else and the hearings. So I think that would be better for the town financially and time-wise and staff-wise.
I can, I can understand it from a numbers perspective and a money perspective, but the thing I'm more concerned about is, even if we wait till May, so you're talking January, new legislators are in August, ready to rock and roll. Governor Lepage has already signed that. You're talking five months in. You're talking the possibility of them starting the licensing.
But it's not legislature in here, I mean, and it does state that they don't believe they're going to have any of that right to file. I'm just saying, that's what it states. They won't have those laws that pretend to us, that pretend to us, that they won't even have, most of them, ready till fall. So I don't know. I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what's best that we can fit in there and make it all work for everybody.
New moratorium makes the most sense.
Yes, but it's when we do it.
That's, that's.
March, I think.
Have our information.
Well, you know, my, my thought process on all of this originally was, you know, if we could do the moratorium, then we could do the educational meetings with the town to discuss it in more detail.
Right.
Again, I, I'm concerned that May, waiting for the moratorium in May is going to, it's, to me.
We're rolling the dice.
Yeah, it's really a rolling the dice at that point.
We're rolling the dice as to whether or not this legislation is going to come down. We're going to have, you know, a period of time in which the states are issuing licenses.
Well, they can't issue licenses that are hulal, correct?
Correct.
No, well, you have 30 days once you get a license to get that municipal approval. So once somebody gets a license, they can go shop around to towns who are willing to sponsor them.
Right, but for this town, if the approval of any one town to operate in.
Right, but we don't have anything in place saying that they can't. Knowing we don't have a comprehensive plan, knowing we don't have any of these other things in place, there's nothing really saying that we can't issue them a license. So at that point, it can, they, yeah, approval, at that point, they can sue us.
Right.
Because there's no reasonable reason why we're denying them. If they buy the property, we don't have, you know, say, we don't have a comprehensive plan. We don't have a way of saying, you know, you can have this business, but you can't have this business. So it really could come down to, you know. A court piece. And that's, that's my fear. My fear is that we don't have anything in place saying that they can't come in. And yes, they, you know, they do have to get municipal approval, but who's, who's to say that we have the right to deny them if it's their land and they're building and they're putting up all the money for it?
The same thing has denied them up till now, is the answer to that.
What's that?
The same thing that, the same thing that has denied them being able to do it up till now is your answer.
But as soon as the licenses come down, we don't have a left to stand on. Yeah, we don't have any footing to say that we have, exactly. And that's, that's why I'm hoping it's going to come sooner rather than later.
We need that in March.
Yes. Really. That's, you know, maybe that, that kind of goes to one of the things we have on our.
Just count your days backwards and see how many you got left. Forty-five to the day, to the election day.
I actually counted. If they have it ready by the 15th, you can do it in March. As long as you have it by the 15th, you can have your special meeting in March. Of January. Yeah, if you have your, your vertevage and stuff ready by the 15th, you're calling for a March special election for the moratorium and then you can. And then you have your May, your May regular elections for your ordinances.
Very much negative against what you're trying to do.
I'm just telling them, I did count the days. I know the days.
Might be better off just to roll the dice and go with the regular election. People are going to say they're not trying to push something onto us that we don't want to do. That'll help get away from that thought. You're going to have some people who think that way anyways, but my opinion.
Plus you have a majority of people in town that voted for recreational marijuana too.
Yes, and I understand that they voted for recreational marijuana, but I don't think a lot of them looked at the details of establishments as a whole. People that voted, the majority of people that voted for recreational marijuana was for the right to consume the product.
Correct.
Not the establishments themselves. And you know, again, this is, this is going to be one of the biggest battles with all this anyways, is explaining to people that this has nothing to do with the fact that you want to smoke your marijuana. This has all to do with the establishments themselves.
Where they're placed and how many.
And how many.
And there's a plan to explain this to the people when presented with it. It's going to be very, it's going to be transparent and very clear. They're not trying to take anything away from them. It's just get out of control and be.
Oh, just trying to keep our community safe and, and the way it's done.
Just like all the rest of the little towns in Maine and some of the big ones.
I mean, with all due respect, there were some of the little towns in Maine that have already had the moratorium ready to go on November 8th. I know that we first, this was first brought to our attention back in September. I kind of feel like, as a whole, we let it slip by us.
You're not too late, but you're on the edge.
And that's, that's kind of why I've stressed this moratorium. I've been in here raising the flag and lighting a fire, I guess you could say.
Well, originally, we were hoping that we could just enact the moratorium, but we found out that we can't, because we don't have the authority to do that, so.
Well, I guess the next question. Right, and I guess the next question is, you know, the Board of Selectmen has access to legal. That also becomes a question for the planning board for passing some of this information. Should we be able to have access to the town's lawyers for communication purposes in regards to this and CCing everybody to kind of get this more streamlined? Because I feel what's happening now is, you know, we're only meeting once in a while to discuss these things and, you know. Planning board's usually holding a monthly meeting. You guys meet sometimes two times a week. Department had me throw a third one in there. But it's having that time to communicate. And don't get me wrong, I know we all, for the most part, most of us have other jobs outside of what we do for the town. So I'm just looking for, again, more communication, being capable to get this done. Now, with that, maybe one of the questions to ask the town lawyers is what their thought process would be on a special election? What are our, what are our rights? What are our limitations?
We can call it any way we want to. I mean, we can call it by raise a hand. We can call it by, it's a special election. We can call it by paper ballot. Doesn't, either way, the selectmen can call that. I mean, I don't think we need to ask the lawyer to call a special town meeting, if that's what we choose to do.
What usually happens in a special town meeting? And how do you people feel about it to turn out to it? You usually get a specific number of people, a smaller amount of number, a smaller amount of people, but they are from special interest.
Yes.
Yeah, I got it off.
Special interest.
Yes.
I think you're going to get that anyway.
You're going to get it anyways, but by running a regular vote, it helps to eliminate some of that.
Right.
It gives the other people that wouldn't be able to get out and vote at one of these special elections, a chance to vote. That's the important thing here.
Well, another thing that could be done to help alleviate that is before having a special election or a special town meeting is to hold a public hearing.
Well, you'd have to.
You'd have to, you always have to do that.
Ten days prior to.
You're legally obliged to do that.
Ten days prior to.
You could hold one or two, in my opinion. I mean, I know that Mike and I have talked about this, about having members from the planning board, members from the select board, Mike being up there for code enforcement to discuss these things with the town. You know, I told Paul, I'm willing to put my head on the zone, if you will, to be up there discussing this.
Oh, you will, don't worry.
I'd like to be up there too, honestly. And I was going to ask if the chief would be interested in, in coming up to you from the fire and safe, health and safety perspective?
Absolutely.
Because I think that that would be another person that would be beneficial to be up there as well. Because he's.
We've actually been preparing for this.
Yeah, because he's on the fire EMS, you know, and we, none of us can really add that perspective in. So I think that he would be a really, he would be an asset.
I would question bringing lawyers in at this point in time. Get your basic rules down.
Well, that's, yeah, we are already working on that.
I do know.
Get your basic rules down. To save time with the lawyers, I think if you wait until you're ready to present to the selectmen, then we'll, then we'll just run it by you at that point. Because then somebody can concentrate on it.
If you could make a copy of the moratorium that we had started working on at our last planning board meeting, that would be excellent.
I think I have it.
Because if we keep, every time, if we keep sending the lawyers remakes of the same, you know, of your rule that you're making up, if we just keep doing that, we're spending their time. Whereas they'll look at it as one final thing and now just take that amount of time and we're done with it. We're done going over and over and over.
No, I think that's our intention, is, but, but if you don't have, if the planning board chair, and I'm assuming that it would be the chair, would have access to a lawyer. If we, if that doesn't, if we don't have access to a lawyer essentially, after we have our final product, it's going to sit on your guys' desk.
No, what he needs, what he needs to do is, is send it to Sue and she can send it off to our lawyers.
Okay, yeah.
Sue has access to.
Yeah.
I prefer it, I prefer it, we save this stuff and come out.
And we can too, yes. Well, I CC it to Sue, she'll argue for us and then we can go from there. Yeah, you're right. I mean, I think, I think you're right, Royce, that we need to really look at it. I mean, him or she has to call us and call us special, for us to come in on a Wednesday or Thursday night again to go over it as soon as you're ready, but they won't do that. But, you know, I can't, you know, I don't know if we want to really give, everybody access to a lawyer. It's quite pricey when everybody has access to that lawyer and then we don't know what's happening. I mean, it is, and I don't mean it that way, but it, it's.
I think what they're, what they're trying to say is they're going to come up with a document.
Yes.
Not, not a document that has a lot of whats and ifs in it. What they'd like to see, that's the job of the planning board anyway, to take that document now and send it along for a legal review.
Right.
To see if it's right, not to have them advise you. You should be putting this out, you shouldn't be putting that out.
Exactly, legal review.
But I understand what Royce was saying. You know, we should, we should review it too before it goes off to them.
You should, that's, it needs to go to you, then you bring Sue and send it off for legal review. So maybe you can add that if you want, to better eye on this, maybe one of you could be elected to be the liaison to the planning board to kind of oversee at the selectmen's level.
And I think that would be fantastic, because quite honestly, I know I had come in that Monday after our Friday meeting where I had asked you to reach out to the lawyers. I came in Monday, asked if the email was sent, found out it was sent. And it wasn't actually until I was leaving that Sue had informed me that he hadn't replied. But if I hadn't attended that meeting, I don't think the planning board would have known what was happening. And that, that's one of those grave concerns I have with this, because we're trying to work on this and get something together. But there seems to be that communication barrier there. And I, maybe we just got to find a better way of working back and forth. You know, I know the select board has a lot of things on their plate at any given time. The planning board has opted to help and roll out with this and we're just asking for the communication aspect.
Yeah, I agree with that too, definitely.
Now, what Jen is passing out to you, we had discussed at our last meeting, Paul had drafted up a moratorium ordinance to be reviewed. to be reviewed by lawyers. We reviewed it as a board. We took it home, molded over. I know that there might be a couple typos in there that maybe Dave might have picked out.
You probably, Dave is right there, isn't it?
But.
Well, one.
Yeah, there's so many different.
I love it.
But yes. Also with that, just keeping in mind, you know, Jen had reached out to MMA and they had sent back a couple different documents that they already have prepped for other towns, where it's just basically copy and paste from a moratorium.
They've been copying this town.
Right. So realistically, at this point, it's a question of what, what the town lawyers feel would be best for us. And I'll stop talking so everybody can have a chance to read.
Even if adopted, you know, it's gonna come, they have amendments afterwards, too.
I didn't remember reading it. I just read like fifty documents a day, so.
Yeah.
It'll all be easy for us after a while.
It's streamed together after a while.
Hey, you can use a few andors and things like that. You're getting the gist of it.
Yeah, he did a really nice job on that.
It's well written, yeah.
He tapped into grandfather ordinance, too.
This is why the lawyers, this is why the lawyers would come in and say, yeah, you gotta do your andors, you gotta do that.
Shall we?
Turn the little one paragraph into three or four, but.
Yeah, that's the thing.
That's what they get paid for, but that's what keeps us out of trouble, too, all of us. And it gets, yeah, I like what I see here, personally.
Yeah, he did a really nice job on that.
We've all been putting a lot into this.
It's important. It's heavy. It has the potential to get messy real quick. So, you know, we're trying to put the brakes on it and do the best that we can.
It's a lot of work.
And a month before a town meeting, making a special meeting still, I just wouldn't, I don't think we'd get it through. I think they're trying to write a law. How the voters go.
Unless the presentation is there.
Well, how are you gonna get it out, they might?
I'm totally.
You got a public hearing.
I'm totally willing to.
Right, yeah, that's the place where.
But you can stand there and tell people, and I've seen many good things come out in front of this town and just because they didn't know all, everything about it, or they didn't like who was presenting it for whatever reason, which usually that's.
It's got fresh faces.
Cute, too.
Things just to get voted down. People don't like it, if they think they're being pushed, being pushed at them.
Now, can I ask?
That's the one thing we have to watch. That's my only thing, I caution on it.
Can I ask, so if it were to be done by paper ballot, then it's, you know, forty-five days prior to the vote?
Yes.
What if it were to be done, what are the timeframes associated with the different ways of voting?
A special town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
You have to have hearings prior to, we picked a date, and I think, and I have to go back and look, but I think you have to have a hearing ten days prior to your special town meeting.
That's right.
Yes. And that's really about it. You call your special town meeting, you put your, you put it out there, you, you know, you, you know, raise a hand, vote. You can vote there at the special town meeting that they can act, they can, you can, somebody can stand up and say, you wanna do it by paper, there. Say yes and no, and they always have the yes and no there. If you want to do it, but, yeah, you're only still gonna get your seventy to a hundred people. You might get a few more because of the situation. But I guess, you know, that's what you're gonna get at that. You're not gonna get the elderly people that don't want to go out there that day and put their opinion in because it's cold, the weather's yucky, and they don't want to sit in the gym or wherever we have it. That, that's my fear, is you're gonna miss all the people that always vote, that, you know, your regular voters. I mean, half of our voters are, been here for a long, long time, and I think they need to also, really.
Yeah, I agree.
What percentage was the absentee ballots this last vote?
I don't know, a lot of presidential.
It was around a quarter.
It was huge, yeah.
Around a quarter of the votes, so that, it does, that's important.
It's kind of.
Thinking people will read this and probably give you a yes vote on it, because it's gonna give you regulation.
Right.
And you need those thinking people. Most of the ones are just kinda here. They really are. You gotta get them out there.
Yeah, once they realize, I think, that it's not about whether or not you can smoke it in your living room. It's about where they're gonna be. It has nothing to do with that. Right.
I don't even think we're at that point yet.
Right.
That would be the ordinance.
The ordinance.
But that's what we have to tell them when the moratorium is.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right. Because at first, when people hear it, they're gonna think it's about whether or not they can smoke.
Right.
And if you present it to them that this is not at all about whether or not you can smoke in your living room or in your car, or, you know.
Basically just giving us time in order to.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, it's all about the.
Yeah, we go with my backyard.
Yeah.
And it's all about preserving the community, too.
Exactly.
We're having it happen right now.
Oh, yeah.
It's happening in our town right now where a community is upset. Okay, and I've been assured by the Planning Board and myself with the presentation. I'm afraid to get up and speak, and in fact, I would, I would invite one of the Board or all of the Board to get up and speak as well. For, against, whatever. We've put a great deal of time into how are we gonna present this? We've been doing.
We discussed a little bit.
Recitals, we put someone on the negative side, someone on the positive side. All the questions that would come up on this, we've, you know, in fact, by the way, we got the easel in the pad.
Oh, nice.
So.
I was thinking I might want to.
Yeah, so.
I hope you're gonna use a big marker so I can read it easier.
Yeah.
I have an easel, I think it'd be neat.
Can you get us some binoculars?
There's one right there, Doug.
It would be unfair to the people not to have such a presentation. To explain, though, it's not because of recreational use, that we're asking the time for.
Yeah, and that's, that's the thing, is the time for it.
Yeah.
Because I really don't feel like we're going to have a thorough ordinance. Something that's gonna address all problems, and yes, we can, you know, add amendments to it and, you know, change it in the long run, but we're not gonna have something well thought and thorough put enough for February. It's so big, it's so heavy, and that's, you know, I'm of mine, that I think we should have a moratorium like yesterday, but, you know, it's, it is what it is. It just happened the way that it did. Now we kind of got to backpedal, but.
Well, I don't know if we're really backpedaling. I mean, I think we're working on it where we need to be. I don't, you know, maybe we could be a little further ahead, but, you know, all the other towns, too, they're just starting to look into it, or they're, they're, they're just really getting into how they're gonna handle it.
But they have their moratoriums.
Right.
Not all of them.
There's, there's.
A lot of them.
Some are not, some.
But a lot of them can just put it in place, too. A lot of them can just go to me and put it in place, and that's what we felt, that we didn't realize, so.
But had we, you know, had the forethought, it could have been on the November ballot. You know, had we addressed it, you know, right away when it came up to our attention, it would have been on the ballot because it was forty-five days prior to the ballot.
Nobody really knew for sure how this vote was gonna turn out in the state either.
There were still towns that placed the moratorium on the November ballot, not in the last.
Yeah, it would have been.
Even if I had the full ordinances written.
And if the, if the cards never run.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
So, is this the documentation that you want the lawyer to review? Is this ready, or do you want?
I, I think, other than, you know, probably like Royce had said, you know, the andors and some change to the language.
This is, I think this is the point where we could send it to the lawyer, if you guys were all set with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, this is why we could send it out.
Yeah, we've already all looked at it and molded over.
They'll have to terminate, they're gonna add things like shall.
They'll add the legal language.
Yeah.
Yeah. Shals are very, shall is like, you're gonna do it.
So I'll leave it right on Sue's desk to have sent to the lawyer to have reviewed.
Yep.
Awesome, awesome.
Thank you.
I'll write two pages.
You gotta be willing to email it down there tomorrow.
Oh, would you like to do some of the images? I put on their front lap, make sure she knows it's a back door.
Thank you, this is a big job for you.
You know, that's the first, again, I think that, you know, as a Select Board, that we need to sit and talk about the voting day and how we want to handle that part of it.
I agree, and, and this is just my two cents on it, real quick. You know, I understand your perspective of going with a paper ballot, if you will. It does make more sense to get those, pull in those other votes. Totally makes sense. I would also say if you were gonna go with just the, you know, voting there, the day of the meeting, you know, maybe having two or three informational meetings prior to the actual vote.
I agree, you would have to.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll say this much, she knows I was up the other night, and Jen does, too, because I don't sleep on the weekends anymore. But up till one o'clock in the morning, starting.
And Jen was, too, she was writing emails, so I was late.
But I was starting a PowerPoint presentation, if you will, to explain question one. Really explain what it is that people voted yes to. For a lot of, like I said, I, my personal opinion is I feel a lot of people voted just because they're like, it's marijuana. It's just no less or no more harmful than alcohol. If I want to smoke it, I should be able to smoke, and that's why they voted in favor of it.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, if your neighbor doesn't want to breathe the smoke, then they don't have it.
They shouldn't, I understand.
And it's like, it's all other backend stuff, like early ad uses and, you know, not next school.
I wouldn't exactly want, you know, grow facility built right next door to my house.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want a social club up on two oh two with a giant pot leaf.
If we don't do something about this, that's exactly what will happen.
That's right.
Exactly.
And if we don't have enough time, then, you know, those, those small things can fall through the cracks.
I believe this will give you, give us the chance to get, to get the small details put in that we need to do. You guys have done really well on this. I can see a lot of hot work.
Yes, yes. Lots and lots and lots of conversations.
And I'm actually hoping, you know, by maybe holding a couple of these, you know, hearings, if you will, beforehand, that talking about the moratorium, we might get some feedback from the individuals as to like.
You might even, you might even, after this is all said and done, and we've accepted it and all that, you might even do a mailer.
I think it'd be worth your money.
About the cheapest way you could do it, and that gives people a chance to.
It's an excellent idea.
Well, and if that were the case, would you, I wonder if it would go over better if you would get a higher turnout for a special town meeting? If you were to send a mailer out prior to?
Possibly.
You know, if more people would show up to it.
Possibly.
And then we wouldn't have to, you know, have, you know, one, one vote right after another.
It's not saying you've got to do this, it's saying that, yes, you can vote on this if you agree that this is fair to whoever you're representing. Do you yourself, or your neighbor, or whoever.
You know, I mean, I look at it this way, they see that, that language, they'll go, okay, why, why do they want to put a halt on or a pause? They, they'll wanna come out and chat about, wait, does that mean I can't smoke? No, nothing, has nothing to do with that.
Do what you're doing.
Once they've got their signs, you can have your pot.
Have your pot.
Whatever you want.
Suck it up.
But, you know, it will start to make those wheels turn for a lot of the individuals that already voted on it. And I, I think you will see, personally, I feel a lot, a lot of people will come out for this. Granted, we did have, if you were to base it off of this November eighth election, this was a presidential election, so you're gonna have a higher voting turnout anyways.
That's right.
But I think something as heavy as this, where people have already voted once on it.
Yes, I have quite a bit of interest. I'm sure of that.
And not only that, just something else I've been kind of mulling over, because I've been doing enough research to bash my head up against a mole with. You know, I'm looking, we had two young men that were in here from Massachusetts that were working on something. And it makes me, so I started to look at, what did Mass just pass? We're gonna see a lot of transit traffic with this as well, because Mass, their licensing.
Huge money.
Over the roof. Over the roof. We're talking ten to fifteen thousand dollars for just a license, whereas in maintenance.
Or, and upwards of that, like.
Or is this gonna increase that population by ten percent in the state?
Not even our, it won't even increase our population. It will just increase out of state people or out of town people having a business here that we can't control.
Right.
A lot of people have businesses, but people just coming in to get it.
Because I was telling him before the meeting, the other thing that I'm hearing is, you know, what about, why wouldn't local people, people who live here that are interested in an establishment, why wouldn't they be considered first before people from outside of the state? You know, because if there's only gonna be so many licenses, shouldn't we look at normal, you know, like, not normal, but local people? Sorry, Mike.
That's okay. So to answer that, first of all, local, people coming in wouldn't be first, because you have to be a, well, for the recrea, not the recreational, for the retail and wholesale, you have to have held a certification of, for the medical marijuana growers.
That's right.
Those are the first ones who are considered.
As the medical marijuana, the people who are already growing medical.
Yeah.
To even open a retail establishment or a retail grow.
Well, they have first dibs on the licenses.
On retail licensing.
I don't think it has anything to do with the town. It's, you have to have been a caregiver for two years within the state and you get first round.
So.
It has nothing to do with the town.
So, like, we couldn't limit, like, the first six licenses, let's say, to somebody from in town? It could be.
I think that's, in order for the approval, that would be the, that would be the decision of the town.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is that that's, you know, if we told people that this would help plan that, give the Planning Board, you know, a time to make an ordinance to allow for local people to be considered first, because we have a lot of caregivers right here in town. So if caregiving is a priority, if we talk to people and said, you know, this moratorium will give the Planning Board time to create an ordinance to let local people be considered first for retail establishments here in town, I think you, you might probably get a whole lot more interest in your ordinances if they thought that it was giving them a little bit of a leg up in their own town, is basically, I guess what I'm saying.
We need to, we need to be more impartial than that.
Well, and I, I don't know if I even want to go down that road, so to speak, because, first of all, it'd be a prejudice. Second of all, second of all, some of these medical establishments aren't where I'd want a retail establishment. You see what I'm saying?
No, 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 no. It's not where, that's not where, that's who. Do you know what I'm saying? Just because somebody's got a grow down there doesn't mean they can have a retail establishment down there. Their retail would.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, we have to be more specific on how we do that.
Exactly.
I do not, you know, some of these private ones are already in neighborhoods that we're not really.
Well, and that's another thing that him and I have discussed, too, is whether or not we allow people to have a dual license operating facility on the same parcel of land.
Right.
So, you know, do we just allow, you know, a social club and not a cultivation facility on one parcel of land? Or, you know, these are, these are all things that we need to consider going into the ordinance and. And all, all the more reason why I, I don't feel like it's gonna be good enough, you know, in February.
Right.
It's all about application too.
Right.
So if you, so if you've got, you know, the application's in front of you, it shouldn't all be first considered for the town of Lebanon. You know, uh, you may have, um, someone who's been a caregiver for a long time. Who has a master plan that works for the town of Lebanon. Probably shot myself in the foot with that one.
Right?
It's true.
Cause I'm wondering exactly who you're talking about. Cause I'm sure you have somebody in mind that didn't come from nowhere.
Matter is, there's gonna be tax money involved.
Oh, making it huge.
And a lot of huge.
We're talking enough with maybe one point million, one point two million.
Well, that's another thing taxpayers need to know too, is, you know, to have a.
You don't need, you don't need to have some control on it.
From the town?
Yeah.
When we set the tax rate? But can we do that?
No, we, we can charge for, um, licenses essentially. So the state is gonna charge them a fee for a license. We can charge an additional fee for a license if we so choose as a town. But not as for tax, like not as for land use taxes because we don't have a comprehensive plan, so we're not charging. Everybody's getting the same rate.
Right.
License tax.
The revenues from this, the revenues from that are based upon the state charging a percentage. Times town, we get fifty percent of that percentage.
Yeah.
Wow.
She has a question. I don't know, I'm sorry.
Can I just say, as somebody who's looking to move to Lebanon and invest, um, in a business in Lebanon that has to do with marijuana cultivation, um, I just see bringing jobs to the town, um, bringing revenue, um, investing a large, um, amount of money before we even start anything like that in property and infrastructure and stuff like that. So, I mean, there's, there's those opportunities as well for the town. And, you know, we would be a very legitimate business, um, wherever we're located. So it, it could be good for Lebanon as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and that's, that's why we need to have, you know, these conversations of that, what, that's why we need to put an ordinance in place because, um, businesses like, we have to consider a lot of other things too. So there's increased traffic, you know, that's road maintenance. There's, we don't have cops in town. That's security issues as well. So we need to come together as, as an entire town to protect our townspeople. And yes, absolutely, you know, you will bring revenue, you will bring growth and all of that stuff, but there's a lot of other, there's a lot of cogs to this, to this.
And just, I mean, our business, we would actually be living in the town of Lebanon as well, so we would be investing in the town. So, you know, it's not like, I know some big money is planning to move into the state of Maine to do this, but that's not what every investor out there is looking at.
Well, and that's, you know, all the much reason why we need to do this, because we need to protect you, we need to protect us, we need to protect everybody with this, so. May I ask, um, what the, what's the word that I'm looking for? The processes for holding informational meetings? Cause this was something that I wasn't sure about, so.
Like a hearing or just a meeting? You can have a meeting anytime. I would contact, um, you know, Dale could set it up with the school department and, um, stuff like that. I mean, you can have a, you can have, you know, a public meeting. It's not considered a hearing until it's scheduled for the election. The election is considered really the hearing, cause that, that's by law. But you can have a meeting anytime you want. I mean, you just have to clear it with the school and, and, um, you know, and I could do it, you know, the clerk probably set that up.
Okay, do we clear it with you guys too? But just to let you, I mean, of course, we would let you know anyway. But do we need like select board approval before we can start that entire process?
Everything has to go through the select board.
Yep.
I just, I could say like, that is not true. They heard the planning board, they don't have to go to the selectmen to ask for a meeting?
For, for this right here?
No.
No, not just for informational meeting.
For us to know, if you just have.
Yeah, just, yeah, they can discuss.
Yeah, and of course we would like you guys to know that we're.
Oh, not public hearing.
Now, inter- no. No, not public hearing, informational meeting, like to what we've been talking about with, you know, the whiteboard and.
Right.
You know, packaging and all that.
No vote taken at that.
Right, it's just, you know, open town discussion essentially.
And you may want to, um, as we crawl, go further and, you know, closer and closer with this, is each meeting you have, you may want this for like fifteen minutes in the beginning of your regular scheduled meetings and put it out there as a informational meeting and see who comes to even these here, you know. I mean, I don't, I hate to put that burden on you, but if you.
No, the more the merrier, as far as I'm concerned.
I mean, I don't know.
See what the interest of people, see who they are and what they've got to say.
I mean, cause then they can, you know, pop it on the website and here and there and, and try to see who comes to this.
They can hash it out on the website.
I mean, I'm not saying, I don't know who would show up, but could be interesting.
Well, the only other thing, um, I don't wanna keep bashing this over the heads, so. Um, the only other thing I, I would like to maybe address with the board right now, just real quick on the marijuana. I know we're looking at the moratorium, but when, when it comes to proposed ordinances, what are some of the things that you as a board are looking for? What are you thinking? What are you brainstorming? Um, because there is a lot to it. There is. And, you know, that's why the ones that I've created are very skeletal in structure, that they leave room for, you know, expanding upon footage away from buildings, things like that.
I asked one question that I can think of just off the top of my head would be how, you, we need opinions from church people about how close.
Um, I, I agree with you on that.
What they feel would be tolerable for them.
Well, I think you should keep the footage the same as church, daycare, school is the same thing.
Right.
Yeah, I haven't seen it, but I think that, um, you know, things like that.
What about from your private residence? What they, how they feel?
Have you ever been inside of one of those places?
How would I feel if somebody wanted to start up a grow facility beside me? Or, or an open one?
Well, I told you recently, I visited one, I couldn't stay, and there was no smoking. I could not stay inside of there for more than a few minutes because it was so sick to my stomach from the smell. And it vents outside, so you do have to keep it, I'm telling you honestly, that, they will tell you there is no odor. There is odor and it's nauseating. If, if somebody built one next to me, I, I'd have to sell my house. I'd sell it cheap because I, I'd have to get the heck away from it. It stinks. It's really gross.
Someone from the other side is gonna call and say.
Right. But you know what? I talk to all these people. No, I talk to all these people. Yeah. Hey, you know what? I'll tell you what, my place would be a great place for a grow. They can come and offer me money, buy it tomorrow morning and I'll be gone, you know?
I have, um, my own different opinions of what I feel. I mean, I, I mean, I think, I'd like to see them all inside. I, I prefer them not to be outside.
Yeah.
Um, where, you know, because I think outside brings in a lot more issues.
Contaminants.
You know, yes.
Yeah, yeah, mold.
Problems, more problems, I think, um, you know, I'd like to stay away from certain places, um, you know. The other, other thing that really kind of I'd like to see is, I would really like it, I don't know if this is even possible, is, you know, the, the, the smoking establishments, I'd like to zone them right down two oh two and not let them at, and, and any of the.
The social clubs?
Yeah, the social clubs and let them go anywhere in the, but I don't know.
I wanna make a traffic jam.
I live right off of two oh two. I don't want them on two oh two. Put them down, put them down Merchant's Row or say, put them down there, put them in the backside of town where I don't have to look at them.
My personal opinion on the social club aspect alone, and me and Cassandra have had this debate, is I don't want them.
Well, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with them, but if I had to go down that road, I would put them in, in, you know, more of a.
Away from you. Near me. Thanks, Christine. Yeah, but you don't know.
Like, and maybe I can have Jen just pass off the skeleton copies of things that I've, I've done and like the prohibition ordinances that I've attempted to tidy up. You know, even with the prohibition ordinances that I wrote for all these different types of establishments, it was set up to be reviewed annually at town meeting. You know, maybe, maybe the, the people of this town might want it down the road, but they may, they may be on the same fence as me. It's kinda like, for some of this, like, eh, maybe not yet.
Yeah, let's see what happens.
Let's see what happens with it first, before we bring it into our little town.
Because look at the letter you just dealt with today in the selectmen's meeting, and that's alcohol. You know what I'm saying? So do you wanna add another one, you know, another issue to that before you get your hands finished with the alcohol issue, you know? It's, the social aspect of it is, is nerve wracking until you know.
So I'm gonna give this to Sue, so she can send it right over to him and then we will just have the conversation sometime, um, you know, I may, you know, if these two are available, we could probably, cause we don't have anything else this week, we probably need to have a. Have a workshop and talk about this one, the election date. If you guys wanna do that, like Thursday night or something.
And if, if I could just ask, maybe CC me in the lawyer's response.
Actually, if you send it to Jen, Jen can distribute it to all of us.
That would be perfect, yeah. If you send it to Jen, she can forward it to us, whatever the lawyer says, you know, we can go back to the drawing board, if you will, and tear it apart.
I imagine there'll be a few days, to say the least.
No, abso- and, and I'm not expecting.
And they'll need that time.
Yeah. I mean, this, this is getting that ball rolling, you know?
I'll bet you they're probably all rolled with this one, so we can.
Oh, I'm sure.
They probably are, and maybe we'll walk out and ask questions that have already been answered somewhere and they'll go right through the list.
Don't go, oh hey, wait a second.
Yeah.
All I gotta do is plug in the name Lebanon.
Well, that does kinda stop the show sometimes, but.
You should have a mailer for the next meeting, so for them to review.
I think that's something that we can work on as a planning board, is getting the mailer together.
Yeah.
Throw something else on my computer and slow it down even more, why not?
Just put it on yours. Mine's getting real bogged down.
Uh, other than that, the, uh, wait till Jen passes that stuff out to you. Take that home, read it, throw it in the trash if you wanna.
Listen, this is my plot folder.
You got one of those too?
Exactly what this one is.
It works.
All right, so you guys are okay on Thursday? Sue posted, just a workshop, six.
This week, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we'll just do a workshop and we'll just talk about what we wanna do as far as the election. Cause on Thursday, Dale's here too, so we can kind of talk to her about this.
Poke her brain.
Yeah, see what, how she feels about it. I mean, I really need her opinion because she's still, she's training. She's getting staff, but she's still, they're still busy. And I mean, I really kinda concerns me to have a different time between taxes.
Training experience.
She just got a presidential, that's a training.
Yeah, I know. She needs help there. You really, maybe hire somebody temporarily to help her or some.
It's not that easy.
I, I know, but I mean, I'm just saying that this is an important issue for our town. So it, it, it really has to come, it, it really has to come soon, you know? Yeah, I know, but busy, too busy tends to be a very common answer here. And, and it can't be too busy for this.
This is great. We can step forward.
Absolutely. So on to, moving on, as Mike would say, I'm gonna seal that line for me, moving on. Uh, we had the grandfather ordinance as well. Now, I know that was actually put together by Paul and he had proposed it to us originally at our last planning board meeting.
Can somebody give me an explanation on what that is from beginning to end?
Here's, here's a good.
Um, yeah.
But it's Paul.
Um, so basically, all the lots that were in existence prior to nineteen seventy-three, that were lawful in existence at that point.
Yep.
Um, would now, under certain contingencies, be able to be built upon. So long as they can meet setback.
Under some, what's considered to be undersized lots now.
Yeah.
Anything, yeah, anything under two acres. Yeah, anything under two acres, um, would be deemed a non-conforming law. But with this grandfather ordinance would be able to be built upon so long as they can meet setback requirements and, um, subsurface wastewater disposal systems.
I saw that. I saw.
Yeah. But it's.
Sorry, did you want to?
No, go for it. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. I, I can make.
Um, so there's other, like we, there's more things that need to be considered in here. Um, a couple of things that came up were, um, whether or not to allow, um, them to expand and how much you, you allow these, you know, places to expand and stuff. But basically, it would enable us to tax them properly, um, to having some, am I correct in saying that? Allow them to be taxed properly?
Well, they'd be taxed properly anyway.
Yeah.
Picked up, because of this, she's, she's right, nineteen seventy-three, uh, there was a town.
Pretty charming.
On the side of my shrunk street. To be built, but also.
That's why the two waivers came into the.
Twenty feet of road frontage, um, um, the, the setbacks, uh, and, uh, infra broke like, uh, additional dwellings on, on these subset properties. The, the, I think what we're trying to establish, the issue here is, is the, the, the ordinance itself, the way it's written. Doesn't have enough, enough language in it. So here's, here's a scenario. So prior to August twenty-seventh, nineteen seventy-three, um, what was the ordinance then? Was it an acre? Was it three quarters of an acre? Does the town allow before nineteen seventy-three, with proof, proof, which would be, uh, a deed or a survey, survey done prior to nineteen seventy-three, August twenty-seven, allow them to build on that lot? Cause there are a number, a large number of non-conforming lots under the new, new nineteen seventy-three, under this, this, uh, ordinance right here. So I'm, I'm a favorer or against, that's what I'm going with this, but adding language, like, yeah, I think the only, the only piece of grandfather I could find was in the sign ordinance. Where they said any signs before this would not apply.
No, I actually just kinda chimed in and don't, don't completely quote me on this, but I was trying to do some state statute research in regard to this. Um, I know that the, the reason the lot size ordinance came into play was in nineteen seventy-three for us really looks because of state statute that was created that year, um, in, back in the early nineteen seventies. So I, I don't know if there was really anything in the state of Maine that specified, you know, lot sizes, what's, what was properly buildable before that. That's the catch twenty-two.
Right, and taking into consideration, all I'm saying is the language inside the ordinance itself.
Right.
Either if you're not gonna allow it, you need to say that. If you are gonna allow it, then you need to say that.
Once you start doing that, though, you better cover everything.
Yes.
Now, something else.
How far, how far does that go? Give us a, give me.
Well, they've been, you know, you can amend these at any time. There's been three amendments since then. The last one was done in nineteen eighty-six.
Okay.
An amendment to it. Uh, the amendment in nineteen eighty-six was, uh, free, it would be additional dwellings. So you can, you can, you can admit, you can add, uh, you can adopt amendments, is that the right word? You can adopt amendments by town vote, by law.
Like, so I know you and I had spoken about this earlier in your office a little bit, but now I think I'm understanding it maybe a little differently. Are you suggesting that the line in the sand be prior to nineteen seventy-three if they can prove that, that it was legal then?
If the, you know, if, if the town people want that. When they say we need to add to the language.
That, that, you know, just arguments, saying, okay, if I came in to see you right now, that's the argument I'm gonna throw at you right now.
I had already happened to me.
So I don't think that's where the line should be, in my opinion, I guess, now that I'm understanding where you're at a little bit better. The, the, the line in the sand would be as a passage of this, you know, this new amendment. You know, so anything that's non-conforming at this point in time, we draw the line right here.
Right.
You know, I think we're on the same page, but I just got, wanna be really careful on the language is what I'm saying.
Yep, and it's all about language, but it needs to have the language.
Yeah, yeah.
Otherwise, somebody could challenge that.
We're running into a lot of serious problems, so that's why I pushed this, I pushed this ball.
Non-conforming or conforming?
Non-conforming.
Non-conforming.
Which would be to grandfather. The, the language would never be grandfathered.
No.
You know, it would be, uh, acceptance of non-conforming laws. I kinda pushed this ball and got it rolling a little bit here on purpose, cause we get a problem.
You, you should get the blame for this.
I get the blame for this one.
Thanks, man.
But we, you know, really come up on the waterfront. You know, this is where, right now, the assessments have changed.
Yeah.
And that's where it really kinda comes down to, but all of you. But all of your lots technically right now that are less than two acres are non-conforming and therefore technically not legal. Uh, not legal lots in the town of Lebanon, you know, because you have no phrasing that says that they were non-conforming accepted.
According to your law ordinance.
According to that law, yeah.
Doesn't say it, yeah.
So, I mean, where's that, I mean, it could get into a real big sticky mess and I'm on camera saying it, but I mean, if a lot of banks realize that we're discussing this, you might see a lot of funding all of a sudden get pulled because it could affect a lot of things and we need to get it straightened out, long period, long story short, that's what I meant. Long story short.
So what do we, what do we basically need to do to straighten it out?
Give it to the planning board to come up with a. I only enforce it, that's all I do.
So you're saying you wanted something to do next month?
I mean, it would be twenty-five days.
Paul's got a good start, Paul's got a real good start.
Yeah, Paul is weak in the fall on this one, I mean, I, I, I can personally say.
Again, he did an amazing job.
My head's been more on the marijuana thing, plus I've also been prepping for the, my other duty in town, which is budgets, so you know, just love to give myself twenty minute things to do, but, uh.
I mean, I'm a lot of fun down home.
So, I mean, should it, should it say something to the effect that, that, you know, all non-conforming lots, as long as they met, and don't get my language because it's not right, but met setbacks as far as well and septic would technically be conforming?
That would be in there, that would be in there.
Because, you know, you're right, I mean, we, if, if it came down the wrong way and we told all these people they couldn't build on these lots they've had for a long time, there's a lot of revenue we're gonna lose, especially on the water. You know, I mean, if they met their setback.
Is there anything in any of these rules that say that if I've got a septic system here, I'm supposed to have my well a hundred feet away here? If this guy here is gonna septic system here, does that?
No, yeah, that, that well has to be away from that one too.
Yes.
So it has to, that distance, no matter, no matter where one of the lawyers.
Right, all, all septics and wells are registered.
Right.
It's fifty, it's fifty feet from your, but, from your line, correct?
Yes, lot line, yes, for, for a well, yes.
How many feet is it from the septic?
Uh-huh, it's a hundred from the field, seventy-five from the tank. Special exceptions give still the local authority up to as little as sixty feet. Anything less than sixty feet, they have to go for a variance through the, uh, the state.
Right, that's right out, that's right out of the town's hands.
Yes, I just add a case, just add a case, just the last fact, the last one.
So to make a long story short, stealing some words from Ben over here. I, I know that the planning board is in the process of reviewing this, trying to work out the nitty gritty, if you will. Um, just wanted to kind of, since you were here tonight, touch base with you, this board of selectmen again, to let them know.
You brought it up?
I, I remember this was, this was brought up. By this one and this one from you guys, came down to us and there's just more stuff that we got. But we're working on, that's, that's, in other words, we're working on.
Did I say how much I like that planning board?
I think, um, we do need to correct it. I mean, we have a lot of people that, that wanna build on non-conforming, that, you know, that's revenue for the town, not saying it doesn't also bring in costs, if, you know, if they're kids or whatever, but for the most part, those small lots aren't gonna be anywhere but on the water, most of them. Not all of them, but some of them are, but we need to correct it.
I think a lot of them are gonna be, are gonna be disqualified anyways because of what we just said about the wells, the distance from the well and septic.
You can usually.
If you take a lot that's fifty feet wide, you are, and a hundred feet long, you don't have a lot to work with. You can walk with the other guy.
There are, there are other options too. If, if it becomes impossible, uh, the state will, you go for the state for a variance, okay? They may say things like, techniques like jazz, jazz seals, or they'll use a, a certain type of configuration with seppics where they're piled on top of each other.
Yeah.
So kind of shrink stuff down to gain footage.
Yeah. As well as the old fashioned way of using a sealed tank and having it pumped up.
Yeah.
Well, that, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, uh, we need a septic.
Tolding.
You still have, you still have, you still can use that for.
For what?
It's kind of what Mike and I were discussing as well, because you've seen them already on your waterfront. You know, those septic systems that were put in, whatever was put in back in nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy, they're failing right now. So you're just gonna start seeing a lot more of them, so we gotta get something straightened out.
What's gonna happen to the water? What would he then, what's happening to it now?
Good part is, is get you passing off the.
It's a shame it would, it would take care of the.
Yeah, right.
Is that what's fertilizing the niagat? Sorry.
I don't wanna make you guys think about that big headache too. I need some Tylenol after this meeting if we keep talking. My question to the board though with this, because I, as I was reading it, I know Paul had worked on this, it seems more like this particular non-conforming laws aspect would be amending our town's lot size ordinance, a separate ordinance.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, and so should the planning board continue to write it as such, as a amended part of that?
Yeah, yes, because we don't need five.
No, absolutely.
The ordinance is all the same thing, you want one correct ordinance, yes.
And that's how it would come about, it would be an amendment, uh, adopted by the.
Right, and I was, I was looking at that because actually, too many things going on, the first thing I said, I'm like, what's section five? Where is there section five? And I'm like, oh, okay. That's what I get for doing this stuff at ten, eleven o'clock at night, but that's, that's the point.
Shorelands only have to proceed that ordinance, right?
Yes, yeah, yes. That's just about all there's going to be to the town.
I don't, I don't think we need anything else at this point, um. Okay, you go study for that test, good luck, get an A.
I don't know what to say, thank you.
Have a good night, Ben.
Yeah, have a good night, Ben.
So, to keep the ball going, uh.
Moving on.
Moving on, yeah. We'll continue to work on this, reach back out to you to show you where we come up with next, um, and kind of go from there, I guess. Trying to, this, this, I'm, I, I feel confident in the planning board, that we'll be able to get this prepped and ready for February to be put on ballot in May. It's just gonna take some more tweaking and a couple of.
If we choose to, like, we, you know, we may have long conversation with the clerk in May, oh, in May, yes.
No, I said May?
Yeah, this, yeah, for this one.
We didn't get all foster about on special.
For the non-conforming one, not marijuana.
Too many things go over in May.
Just kidding. So moving on to other businesses, does anybody else have any other business?
You could have.
Looking at Mike for this one. I'm looking at Mike for this one.
There is, we got such a big platter right now, I think, anything we could do, we, we pull up the first of the year. These are, these are big things, so.
Well, now you have the curious, Mike. And we'll just keep it on the back burner for now. Yeah.
We'll open the drawer and put it inside and then.
I'm putting my pot in there. Is that on camera?
I hope that's medicinal.
We got a little problem.
You do.
It needs money.
Yes, it is, I get it as well.
So the, uh, the fellow came here to test the, uh, to go over the generator, now we have this conversation.
Yeah.
Yes.
He's gonna, he's gonna, uh, supply us with, it'll be a form, a record. And I have it outside, but it'll be a record.
Why is it gonna be posted?
On his, no, it'll be, it'll go to the board of selectmen.
Needs to be posted somewhere.
The board wants to get it.
So that you can walk in and check it and wouldn't hurt if it was just one of the doors.
Yeah, that would be the job of the board of selectmen. Yeah.
You know, hidden away in some record cabinet somewhere where we can't find it.
But this isn't planning board, anyone's gonna be talking about that.
Right, so, yeah, he'll have a form. One of the, one of the things here discussed was, um, that the tank was below thirty-nine percent. The thirty-nine percent at the tank. So being that low, uh, he had some concerns that, um, minimum should be forty in order for that generator to run on the full load.
Are you talking about, I don't know what you're talking about, but.
Water in the tank?
Our propane, I don't think, I don't know what you're talking about.
I'm just guessing.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
So we should talk to technical.
So when, when are they set up to fill then?
We can ask Jordan, he can check and see when they're set, because it's automatic, it used to be automatic, I'm not sure.
So, let me.
But this is.
Let me finish. So, uh, when I, when I contacted Gavin, his actual supplier, they said that most likely it was the secondary valve on the tank. So they're gonna check that, because it shouldn't be at, um, thirty-nine percent. So, which, the, the, the generator guy is only going by what he sees, so trying to bring everybody together. The last thing is, uh, generator test. Being at the thirty-nine, or somebody thinks, um, the test was not done.
This Phil is twenty years old now, is getting that close?
What?
Ten.
Ten?
It's built in two thousand and eight.
Uh, it's, it was six.
Well, it was built in six, we moved in two thousand and eight, so we built it.
So, the way to test this is you just simply walk out there and shut the power rods in the building. And it's just a test, so before you do that, you come in and tell everybody you're doing that, it's like you shut down the computers, the ones who don't have the battery backup.
What about when this thing is tested itself?
It does that every week.
Yeah.
But that's a self-test, it's not, it's not.
Not a full load test probably.
Right, it doesn't test the building, okay? So, um, would anybody have any objections? I mean, to walk out there and, and throw a test on there?
No.
I've had it all.
No.
No, no, no.
I don't want to do. I don't, I need just tell them.
So.
Take off home?
Well, wait, we'll walk around and tell everybody.
Go sell home, yeah.
And you wait and say, run it for, for about ten to fifteen minutes, uh, and then just simply turn the power down from the building. It's all automatic, there's no.
We have one of those.
Yeah, so.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll give this to Sue, I'll send that to her, I gave that on our desk, thank you, alright.
And before you guys head out, I just wanna, I'm sorry, I'm gonna cut you.
Moving on.
No, I just wanna thank you guys for coming tonight. I, I do.
Thank you guys for the work you've done.
That's hard to do.
I didn't realize how far you've gone ahead with this.
I think it makes a long day for these folks too.
And, and, you know, don't get, don't get your own, I know you individuals have a lot on your plate right now, a lot.
My point.
And I'm just adding more to that, I guess, but.
It's alright, we do do it, so.
Just gotta get down.
We can work together and that's, that's all I'm asking, keep communicating with us, we'll keep communicating with you, we'll hammer out the details and get something solved. It's gonna take all of us to get this done.
Together, we can do this.
We can.
So go home, hopefully you guys get there in time to catch the pass game, because I don't know if I'm gonna be able to do that tonight.
I gotta get my horses in first.
Who are they playing?
Uh, Ravens.
I'm gonna.
Oh, you too?
Yes, but I'm not really winning this week, I've lost five games.
I'm there with you, don't feel bad.
You what?
I've lost five games this week in football, I'm in pool every week, my neighbor does play pool, we're all in pool.
What, you're gonna pool?
No, my neighbor does pool too. I gotta go to neighbor, oh, yes, she does.
Well, you don't play.
We play football pool. She sends us the stats every week, we pick out teams every week and if you win, then we get twenty-eight bucks, it costs thirty-two in season, two dollars a week, so that's a nice. It's fine, it's a good time. Alright, I'm leaving.
You know, if you didn't want to trouble Sue, I would volunteer to get this one. That's a bad mark, alright.
Oh, yeah? I had to put it on our desk with a note on it.
Time to go.
She can send it right out in the line, I'll take her money. Scan it and go right, the scan is in there. It's right on, she'll put it right out in the line, I'm sure.
I can, maybe I'll wear the, the copy of it and she can just send it?
It doesn't, no, we take some minutes, she scans it, the, the, Malloy is, yeah, and Malloy is, um, things right in the scanner. I'm off.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, go with you.
I'm off, I'm moving on.
Good night.
We still got minutes to do unfortunately, but.
George, you're in the meeting yet?
Did you guys open a meeting?
Just checking.
I thought you guys had to have a meeting, I thought you had to have an official meeting every time. Every time you met.
You're supposed to, once, once you have a forum, you're supposed to.
Oh, even if you're.
Yeah, even if they're sitting in.
I, I can't vote to make a motion for your meeting, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna charge it, I'm gonna charge Brian.
Yeah, it's, yeah. I thought every Friday.
My, my twelve total, I don't know.
Because the last time they had, they had their own meeting.
Only because they were sitting on hours and they were together.
No, because their meeting was canceled the night before, so they rescheduled it for Tuesday.
I think, I think it is that though, that anytime they're together, it's considered, they have a meeting, it's like.
The camera's on, the camera's on. The camera's on.
But it's not malicious, so.
It's not.
Yeah, yeah.
Camera's on.
Alright, moving on. Moving on.
All right, everybody, have a great night.
You too.
Get all the work that was done.
Thank you, thank you.
Now keep harassing.
It's like, no, I'm not. No, he said he's gonna harass you guys.
Oh, we, we need that, somebody gotta keep us on our toes.
So I guess my question at this point, uh, we have minutes to review, was also the looks like you gave me a sick note for the.
Oh, that's for the town report, they have the changes to it.
Yeah, town report, thank you, my goodness, I couldn't even remember the name. So just.
There was a, a couple minor changes that I made then, we just had officially vote on it, so.
We do have a forum, does it, everybody feel okay doing without Paul being present, or?
Yeah, I, he was the one that wrote it up, so I'm against.
I think really if I, oh, Jen, I'm gonna be a pain in the butt.
No, what did I do?
Collect fortititit.
A ditetit, really?
Collect fortititit. I'm serious, collect fortititit.
Oh, yeah.
There's a four, there's some.
Dang it.
Uh, this is our, uh, town report.
Yeah, that, you had to give to Dale.
Just, Dale is still, soon you.
Maybe it's Sue then.
Maybe it's Sue, I, you know something, there have been so many names lately that I can't keep track of them all.
Yeah.
My head's been spinning lately, so.
Mike, did you have anything else?
Uh, no. I mean, there's all the other growth stuff, but, you know, that's, that's a, a big ballgame, we really shouldn't be taking that on, we're quite, quite playful right now.
Yeah, I totally like that.
There's always, you know, the after the first of the year, it'll stop and stop.
Yeah, the non-conforming and the marijuana definitely takes precedence.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, we have a growth ordinance that is expired.
Yeah. Yeah, because they put a sunset clause in it, right? Is that the one that they put the sunset clause on?
No, they put a sunset clause in it, that's, that's what it's called.
Yeah.
It was enacted upon in two thousand and four and they put a ten year, or two thousand and three or something to that effect and they put a ten year.
Yeah, sunset.
Right, so it's, it's expired by, by two years. I mean, realistically with something like that, and just scare me out on this one, Mike, this might be something you can bring back to the board of selectmen. Maybe that's something that they could possibly just re, essentially retype and re-renew at the town meeting.
Yes.
That, that would be.
Well, the planning board's supposed to monitor it.
I mean, we can go through it and I've read the ordinance a couple times myself, I don't know.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I had, I had only discovered it because, um, as part of its growth and development.
The growth ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so we're supposed to take, keep track of that?
It, it's, it's.
We were supposed to, I don't think it was ever brought to our attention at, well, especially because this board started, really started earlier this year.
Well, it very well may have been too, that nobody really said who was supposed to monitor it, you know?
I know that they were working on one along with the lot size ordinance with Gary and them, right? Do you remember that? It was like, those we were starting to work on that? It was like, those we were starting to work on that?
I don't, I, no, uh, it was before my time.
And then there was like a big, I'm, I think they did, and it went to, I think it went to legal and everything, I'll look into that.
Yeah, looking out, so.
Yeah.
But, real quick on that, that might be the best way at this time to handle something like that, Mike, and that's.
What's the best way to handle it?
Possibly just look at what we have.
Resurrect it.
Resurrect it, throw it back out there, maybe remove this, amended to remove that sunset clause, but to be reviewed X, to be reviewed.
Yeah.
Every X amount of years, but.
For ten years.
But, other than that, you know, so that way it doesn't happen again, because I, I feel like why that probably fell through the grapevine is because you've had so many changes in boards,
Mm-hmm.
departments and everything else in town.
It could be, I, you know, it's, when I was, I think the, the question came up, uh, it's, it's, it's actually on, it came up because of resurrecting the, the comprehensive plan. And as part of that, it's called growth.
Yeah.
You have to watch it, because if you give out more permits than you have schools for, this would start to come back to, all your services.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, you, you got a small highway department, they can't do all the roads that they're supposed to do, um, or, you're in the town hall here, it's, in fact, you can see it, and I think this is probably started turning the light bulb on, when they started having people at that counter open the door.
Yeah.
Our little town isn't so little anymore.
No, we, it's, 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 it's grown out of it.
Yeah?
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
To, uh, steal the words from Ben, I know one of the things he used to describe it to me, and it's just think of it as a giant log with no skeletal structure.
Yeah, uh, so, it, it's, and, and, and really needs to be looked at, because you have a population of over seven thousand people now.
And that's, that's just winter time, we're not talking about summer transit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our, our population probably doubles.
No, that's seven thousand, you've got this now.
Residents.
Lot ordinance.
Oh, this, not, not people living here, but people, registered voters, uh.
Not registered voters, uh, but, you have seven, a population of seven thousand people, and that could be the height of summer, okay? People who own property here, there's a tax paying dollars.
Well, I'm just thinking as, as a whole, I know the popu-
But don't forget, don't forget, and, because every person's registered, okay? You have two people to a household, doesn't mean there's seven thousand homes here.
Right.
Some houses have more than that.
Yeah.
So Mike, maybe what I'll do in regards to the growth thing, maybe I can, at some point, take a look at what we have written, maybe throw another copy your way, maybe update it a bit.
Yeah.
Let you take a look at it and see if you wanna present that to the board of selectmen.
Sure.
In regard, because I, I think that, that, that should be one that's fairly simple to.
Yeah.
Throw on to the ballot in May.
Yeah.
To just say, hey, by the way, you know what happened? This expired, we're looking to renew it.
Right, so, so because of that, because it expired, the, the, uh, the word to that growth ordinance is, falls under the purview of code enforcement. You only give up so many, so many building permits, a way to control the growth of this town, and, and different kind of permits. So, when you give up, you're only supposed to give up fifty-four, and you gave out a hundred and eighty-two.
And there's nothing saying that you can't.
You can be challenged on it, why can't I have a permit?
Um, yeah.
I've met all, I've met all of the ordinances, why can't I have it? There's nothing in this town that says I can't build.
And that's the whole thing with the marijuana thing too, because there's nothing in, there's nothing saying that they can't.
Well, I moved here, it was, you had to sit there, and they could only issue you a certain amount of, um, split built, and, um, mobile homes.
Right.
And that was that, and we got like one of the last ones for that year, and we would have to wait, so.
Glad we have good people on our boards.
Like, really, I'm glad we have people that are like actually dedicated to, you know, rectifying these situations. It's breath of fresh air.
You guys are fantastic.
Only because you are.
I think I have a few grays kicking in my beard now because of all this, besides the board.
It's distinguished.
Thank you.
I like that, thanks.
Told you you wouldn't hear anymore.
This is all for.
Did you find your copy of this?
Yes, yeah, lots.
Dave, did you see anything there that?
I didn't see anything else.
You just cut the four too.
I took the four out.
Thank you.
I was trying to be like those texting kids with putting all these things in there.
Well, I know that we have gone over this, beat this one over the head, um, if I could get a motion to get this approved, and per, per, uh.
Corrections.
Corrections of the form.
And add something about the lawyers. You're approving it, right?
Oh, no, this, this is, uh.
Oh, no, no, this is, this is the report from the planning board.
Yeah, not the one I'm talking about.
Oh, no, alright, sorry.
To go back.
Yeah.
Like, ah.
No, we, we kinda bounced there, sorry, I'm, I'm not used to heading these things, so I'm bouncing.
You're doing a great job.
Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, so can I get a motion to make that happen?
I will make a motion to accept the.
Town report.
Thank you, town report.
As corrected.
As corrected.
I'll second that motion, I wasn't trying to put words in your mouth.
Alright, so that is approved, per that. And what, maybe at the next meeting when Paul's here, well, I don't know if he wants us to do like he normally does and just sign off on it.
Sign off, okay.
But we'll wait till he's here with the corrected one, just, we'll let him know, hey, we approved it, and just gotta sign off on it, fair we wait for you.
I'll send them an email tonight too.
Don't, don't bug him too much, I.
Oh, yeah, that's true, yeah.
We're full played at the moment.
He's, I've been.
Family emergency.
Yeah, yeah.
Family emergency, so. Um, as, you know, I'm drawing a blank on minutes that Jen gave us, did, were they sent via email yet, or am I losing my mind?
I did, I sent, I think I just sent them yesterday, I started to finish them, so, I think I did last night.
Okay, so. Okay, so, for what?
When was it last, was it last night that I was, I sent one once and one of them, obviously?
It wasn't last night, it was the night before they start.
Clearly.
So, you know what, I, I think, for now, I think we might just hold off on these and do our.
I'm still a little fuzzy. Because the next meeting.
Table the.
Yeah, I, yeah, go comfortable table and.
Table.
And then we'll do all three.
Then you can do all your edits, and we can send, do what we normally do via email, and then sign off on it in January.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have three, because we'll have today's.
Yep.
Okay.
And once you send that, we can just, basically, we can get all, dot the i's, cross the t's, and then sign off on it at our, at our next meeting.
Okay, awesome.
And as for the.
I know those.
Well, that's for it.
Yep, uh.
Do you need a motion to table them? Since it's on the agenda, do you know?
No, I don't.
No, no, not for review of them.
I don't think so, okay, for the next.
Okay.
Thank you for covering me on that. You know, I never caught that kid's na- last name last time.
Shaver?
No, 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 uh, from December.
Oh, Z Adh.
The one.
Z Adh?
Tim Z Adh. Z I A D H.
Yeah, our little, uh.
He's a nice kid.
Young student, okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 yep.
Yeah.
Well, unless.
And I was, him and I were discussing this, just since you brought up that kid, he hasn't won up on everybody else that's in his political science class now, because marijuana is a major issue in the town. And he now understands the backend of, you know, what's coming down because of this, and I think that's really, really cool, I think that's pretty awesome.
I'm like, you didn't come back, he's like, I don't know, thanks.
I'll tell you this much, it looked like he was taking notes like a madman, but, yeah.
More than someone else does here.
I'm a notes, I'm a mental note person.
Yeah, I, lots of them, I try.
I can take like ten pages, and then I have to.
I have chicken scraps, I mean, that's why I'm logging down.
I just same thing, and then consolidate.
Yes, but we'll, I couldn't read it anyway.
If we could go back to the marijuana thing specifically, the informational meeting, I just wanted to let Mike know, um, of what our conversation was the other day. Is, I was wondering, and I wanted to bounce this off you, is, the informational meetings, how to kinda go about setting up, like, I'm thinking that we need at least two meetings.
Yeah.
Is what I'm thinking, he had made the suggestion that the first meeting just be informational, so, you know, this is what the, this is what the legislation says, you know, this is all the things that you need to know about it, and have, you know, people ask questions and stuff, but allow them to go off and kinda digest the information.
You need one meeting before that to rehearse, to get all this stuff together.
Okay, just for us, together.
Like I told you about that easel, the nice part about that easel, when you write all your notes on that, one of the things it does, because it keeps you on track. Because all you need is one question, then another question, then, how did we get there? This is about, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, uh, um, and, and it, something visual for the people to see.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely.
So, I think you have one rehearsal.
Alright, so.
Well practiced.
With, with that, one of the things I was saying to her, um, I was thinking more along the lines of that first, first hearing or meeting, whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I just kinda wanted to do kind of like a presentation, like a PowerPoint, and I started actually typing up a PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Just kinda going, what is question one?
Yeah.
And then just explaining it to everybody, hey, this is what you voted on, here's what's coming with it, here's what, what's on the table. Talking more about just what the question was.
Right.
Not so much like what we're doing currently, what we're looking to do, kinda tailing that aspect, but giving the people the information, and then saying, okay, you've come out for this informational meeting to learn more about question one, now we invite you back a couple weeks from now.
Yeah.
To get more involved in discussion.
Yeah.
What would you want in your town? Go home, chew this over.
Do the research yourself.
Talk to your neighbors and.
Ten years from now, we are having your own families, and you, you know what I mean, you have, because a lot of his kids and stuff, they were just like, yeah, let's do it, homework, and we'll be able to.
I thought you had homework.
The cat came back.
I thought he had homework.
I do?
That's the one.
Do you have more input? Do you have more input?
No.
But I think if we break it up that way, then we're not gonna be there for hours and hours and hours, and we're gonna be able to consolidate, you know, kinda steer in the way that is best suited for everybody, because I know for me personally, every time I, you know, digest a lot of information, I go home and I mull it over, and then I think of, you know, a million different things that I should have asked, that I just forgot to, and I'd really like people to have the opportunity to do that, you know, stew on it and stuff, and then have a more in-depth conversation and, and ask more questions, but I wanted to bounce that off on you, uh, off, because I wanted to see how you felt about it.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I just, it, it, it can take more than one person, you know, we put all that burden on you.
No, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, and that's what I'm thinking as well, us.
No, no, you're just messing with it, you're gonna get questions.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think tag team is, is important as a group effort.
Yeah.
And maybe that's, maybe that's our next step, is to reach out to Dale, see what it would take to set up that informational meeting, whether it's in the beginning of January, I know a lot of people aren't gonna come out this time of year with all the holidays and everything. And again, I don't know, I might be surprised, people might not want it, be around a Christmas tree, but, um.
Come January, I always had good success with informational meetings, whenever I did them, people were looking for something to do, um, I shelled out, I, I don't remember what it was, forty bucks in munchkins and coffee, and they were thrilled.
Because there's no kids' sports. In January, they have time.
So I had, I did, I'd have my forty.
Yeah, but, like baseball, football, popular kids' sports, there's none.
You get forty people come out, and they're gonna go back and talk to their group, you know, their, so.
Theirs circle.
Their circle people.
Well, collective circles.
And then hopefully they'll show up to the next meeting with all those friends that they talked to, you know?
So maybe that's our next step, is to get ready for just a public conversation. Public convo of, what's, what's question one?
Sure, better.
Yeah.
Maybe tackle that after the first of the year?
Yeah.
Okay, so, may.
Awesome.
I don't know if you can reach out to the school, or maybe Dale, and find out what, what are steps that are to hold that? I don't mind, uh.
I'll get Dr. Patty.
I don't mind throwing a few bucks in for coffee and donuts, that's not too hard, maybe get some hot chocolate, because I know some people don't have coffee, but.
Wait, what, 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 the town should pay for that?
No. The town won't pay for it.
Yeah, it's all good.
This, this is so important to me that I don't mind.
Yeah.
Throwing forty bucks at it.
Yeah.
I give myself, like, you know, she gives me an allowance each week, I can spend a little bit of money.
This is the town should pay for it, oh my god, Mike.
It should, but, it should be, but.
Look right for the people, be sorry.
I know, you guys got like twenty-seven point something mil rate over there, we're only operating on fifteen, they don't even give us enough money for donuts.
Not even munchkins, huh?
Not even the holes.
Oh, they're just holes.
About it, the empty blocks.
So now are you looking for a Saturday, or a weeknight, or?
I think a weekend would be probably the best.
Weekends.
Saturday, two o'clock is what I was doing.
Yeah.
People have gone to the dump, they've done their thing.
That's what I'm thinking.
But you know, if you're gonna have multiple, you might wanna do like, say, but you might wanna, I think Thursday nights is also, usually winds up Thursday nights winds up pretty good for like an evening meeting. You know, Saturday in the afternoon, like, I don't know about anybody else, my weekends are huge, I do like fifteen events in a weekend, you know? So, if you did like a Saturday at two, and then did like a Thursday night at like six or seven after people have gotten home from work and can relax or something, you know?
Well, you've got a key to here too, so you could always set one up here for a weekend night.
For the initial ones, not the public hearing, because you probably don't have an extraordinary turnout, and you could always, people might just sit there.
Fifty people.
I was gonna say, like, scream turnout.
I can hear Dan now.
Yep, based off square footage, plenty of room out there.
How, how many do you like in the building?
Seventeen in here, twenty-two in there, so it gives you thirty-nine people.
So, five, one person per five square feet, it's not big.
Right, yeah.
It's seventeen in here, is twenty-two out in the lobby.
It's one person per five square feet, I mean, we had to measure it out.
Well, how about this, Deb, because I know you are our town's un, unofficial, unofficial, unaffiliated, unsponsored person to the people. Think you could maybe put a poll out for the planning board to see what, what day would work best for people to come out to a hearing?
Well, let me tell you, I have, I had told you already, I have some things I'm gonna be taking around the week between Christmas and New Year. If you wanna send me a little poll, I will certainly include that in my little thing, and I'll ask them to just check a couple boxes and let me know.
I'm just, I'm curious with, say goodbye to your phone.
Why? No, I'm not, I'm not gonna put it on my phone, I'm gonna put it on a piece, just send me what you want, we'll put it on a piece of paper, because I'm, I'm getting some signatures, so while I'm asking people to sign, I'll ask them what time would work better.
I just wanna see what people would wanna come out to talk about.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I can ask them while I'm talking, I'm gonna have to be talking to them anyway, to get the signatures that I need, so I can just as easily ask them in the midst of that, what night would be better for you to hear about this, you know?
For all the stuff on Facebook, maybe, too?
Yeah, yeah, I would definitely, I would definitely do that.
Facebook, and just, what works best for you.
To see who nibbles. Yeah.
Could you send it as a, um, all-town notice, or no, because it's.